Good evening. I'd invite you to join us with the pleasure of allegiance.
My life allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Garrick?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Health, on August 31st, City Hall will be illuminated in purple in recognition of International Overdose Awareness Day. This is the world's largest annual campaign to end overdose, remembering without stigma for those who have died and acknowledge the grief of the family and friends left behind. The campaign raises awareness of overdose, which is one of the world's most severe public health crises, and stimulates action and discussion about evident A's overpost prevention and drug policy. Library, in 2021, the Northern Focus Photography Exhibit is up at the downtown Main Library through September 30th. I would encourage everyone to check out the beautiful submissions. The library continues to offer Begina Yoga sessions at the Carlson Library Thursday evenings. In 2021, One Book One Community Reading Project, an event series, has started, and this year's title is "Everything You Wanted to Know About Indians But Were Afraid to Ask." The fall/winter hours, the library starts September 7th with the Main and Carlson Libraries open Sundays from 1 to 6 through Memorial Day. Inspections. The inspections Department is busy over the last, over the past year on many dangerous and substandard building projects. Only a small percentage ever make it to the City Commission, so inspections and the Communications Team have put together a short video of some of the inspection department successes, which include rebuilds, repairs, and some new empty lots. The video started with 80 projects, which is then called down to 25 while still showing the great work the inspection staff is doing every day. Here is a video. The Western Planner Board, a committee comprised of experts from planning organizations across 13 western states, has selected the City of Fargo Planning Commission Chairman Rocky Snyder as the Citizen Planner of the Year for 2021. The award recognizes a person who has distinguished themselves as a champion and leader of the project or program that embodies the principles of planning. I'm proud to see that Rocky's tireless commitment to improving our community earned recognition on a national level. Is Rocky here tonight, Nicole? No? We finally nominate somebody and somebody wins, right? Isn't that nice? Yes, very good. Other, the Department of Communications and Government Affairs has also put together two brief videos for us this evening. Let's first look at an inside look on installation of the beautiful new donor-funded Spirit of Sandbaker Arch across from City Hall. Next, we have a video introducing our new Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Dr. Terry Hogan. This video gives us some insight into what Dr. Hogan has been working hard on and enjoying in his first few months with the city.
I was in higher education for a very, very long time, but on the side, on the side note, I was doing consulting. And being is that I had all of that experience, you know, from teaching courses in race and ethnic relations, cultural diversity, and that is what led me to say, in fact, is that I wanted to do it on a full-time basis. On what my role would be with the city at this point is number one, to build relationships, number two, to form partnerships with citizens and, of course, businesses and so forth. I hope to make this my home, you know? I just want to be one of those valued assets, if you will. I just want to make sure that people feel happy, they feel wanted, they feel a belonging here in the city of Fargo. I want them to be able to come here to see all groups of people because we are America. We, you know, we work with populations. And the only thing, as I've said in passing, is that the term RACE R-A-C-E is a socially constructed idea. We are people first. We have different ideas, we have different needs, we have different wants. It's just that we just, although we don't look the same, we just do things a little different, you know? And that is based off of one social status and social structure, you know? And I will, I will just take that to where it needs to go because, you know, that's the fact of the matter.
They must like your haircut, Terry, huh? Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving item two from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda?
So move, second.
Moved, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2021 meeting?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items one through 26 excluding item number two, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, Garrick and Preston. Roll call, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Regular Agenda, we have the resident comment period. In person, we have John Cannell.
Good evening. How are you today?
Good.
I only wish to talk about because an officer of the Police Department put a abandoned vehicle on my truck in a four-hour parking zone at 10 o'clock in the morning. That parking zone starts at 8 o'clock and goes to 5 o'clock. This is a printout I will give to her that you can see going past it down the line, that there is no way that my truck could have been out on the street for 48 hours. This is a, from the parking ramp, where I go in every night and come out every day. There's no way that my truck could have been out on the street for that amount of time if I'm up in the parking ramp. But yet, I was told that the confidential informant of the Fargo Police Department told them that I was parking on the street right in that spot for 48 hours. And yet, they put up an abandoned notice on my truck so everybody in the city of Fargo could see that my truck was there and listed as abandoned. My registration is current, my tabs are current, my insurance is current, and my license is current. I talked to the lieutenant at the Police Department, who told me that he had a report that my truck was sitting there for 20, for 48 hours before the time they put that, that notice on there. And as you can all see, my truck has not been sitting on the street for 48 hours. It had only been there since 8 o'clock in the morning in a four-hour parking zone. I believe the officer should not have put that ticket on there or that abandoned notice for everybody in Fargo to see. And because of it, I would like an apology from the Police Department. They put it in writing for everybody to see that my truck is there for abandonment under a falsified tip from some confidential informant of theirs that it's not true. My truck was not there. And then, 27 hours later, after I parked the truck there at 10 o'clock, an officer, I caught the officer in the middle of trying to put another abandoned notice on my truck, just 27 hours later, and...
Time's up, John.
Oh, that's it?
Yep.
Oh.
Well, we can look into it. Assistant Chief is here tonight. He'll look into the complaint and we'll look into it for you, okay?
Okay, I have another receipt from Friday when that officer was trying to put another abandoned notice on there claiming I was parking there at 8 o'clock and now it's 1 o'clock. It couldn't have been there because I wasn't even there. I was in Morgue, Minnesota, at 9:05. Couldn't have been there at 8 o'clock. That's why I call more police corruption in that I have to follow the parking permits. Why don't the police have to follow the parking permit?
We'll look into it, John.
Thank you.
Will Thompson? Actually Travis, have we just give Travis those notices, Eric, so we don't have to lose him?
Thank you. Later on in this meeting, the city attorney is going to give a status report on the implementation of a award system. It's my understanding that according to North Dakota State law, switching to award system would necessitate the switch to a council system instead of a commissioner system. As these questions of governmental structure get deeper and more complex, I would implore the City Commission, as well as the electors of the city of Fargo, to consider a charter commission as a solution to solving these structural questions. The Fargo Home Rule Charter was written in the 1970s. It was meant to give the city more flexibility at the local level. Gives us the latitude as a city to change to meet our needs. A lot has changed in the last 50 years, and a lot more will continue to change in the next 50 years. And I believe that the only way to create a structurally sound and efficient local government is to reexamine the basis of the Home Rule Charter. And the only way to do that would be to open a charter commission. And my recommendation, if one were to be explored and to be opened, would be to make it a publicly elected one. So members of the public could run to work in concert with the City Commission to, to make reforms that could be beneficial for the city. And that's all I had to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Will. Wes Filomay?
Wes Filomay, he/him/his pronouns. I'd like to start by saying, long live George Floyd. A few months ago, this City Commission was presented with a hate crime ordinance meant to protect vulnerable members of our community. I recall a certain commissioner calling the measure divisive, and I quote, "We shouldn't put members of our community into boxes." A few weeks later, that same commissioner would hypocritically begin pushing for a ward system that would literally put members of our community into boxes. As it stands, every one of you has a vested interest in doing what is best for our entire community. Under award system, you all would only do what is best for the part of the community you represent. There is already a gap between the affluent Fargo and the underserved Fargo. With award system in place, the gap would only grow wider. You all are being fear mongered into believing that you should preempt those who wish to bring award system to the ballot box. I find it troubling that someone who is clearly spiraling out of control can have the ability to change the face of our entire city government. Those motivated by self-interest want to allow it. Mayor, I hope that you did not spend close to two decades uniting our community just to divide it into factions now. Commissioner Strand, I remember how proud you were when speaking of how you had once been considered an activist by those who observed you as a leader. I want you to know that when you are given a title by the people, that title cannot be relinquished unless you work against the people. Being an activist means not being afraid of agitation or confrontation. It is time you truly get back to that for the sake of our city. Deputy Mayor Pepcorn, I'll never forgive you for the undue harm you caused our American, new American community, but thank you for not avoiding the elephant in the room and taking it head-on. Hopefully, more of you will take real action. Don't divide Fargo, unite Fargo. Thank you.
Grace Sumbaway?
Hello. My name is Grace Sumbway, and this is probably the first time you guys will see me here. I just have a few questions. What do you guys are so afraid of black people? Or black businesses in this town? I want to speak a little bit about what's going on with the Chief of Police, Taami Zibalowski, and Mr. Stephen. The injustice that's been going on, they said it's been going on for quite a while. And I want to talk a little bit, what got me frustrated a little bit. I want to talk about what happened last week with Windbreak. Windbreak has had two incident that has happened that were minors is caught getting drunk and get pulled over by the police officers. But what is, what did you guys do? You guys gave me a $500 fine. And you guys had to figure it out a way for them to be able to use an ID detector. You guys did that for them, but not for black ownership nightclub. That's insane. It's ridiculous. You guys got to do better. It's ridiculous that we see this, things happen over and over and over again in the city of Fargo. Empire had a shootout. People got shot. One of my friends, actually a close friend, got shot there. But that did not go nowhere. There's a general manager be, beating up somebody that went on the rug. Nobody talked about it. I did not see Chief Zibalowski standing up here and trying to tell y'all, let's shut him down. But when he came down to Club Africa, that man stood up quick to the media. He asked for it to be shutting down. So I'm gonna ask you guys a question. If somebody come to your house or your business, right? And they decided to shoot somebody outside, and you have a gun in your car, you have females working there, what would you do? Ask yourself that question. And I've never seen in my life where I've been in, I've worked here for quite some time and understand how the system work. The general manager of Club Africa, they were asked to fill out an application of ownership for them to go on a background check. You guys did not know that. Steve knows, and I have a video of him doing that. So when we sit here, we want to talk about, we got Tony right there, he goes on media and talk whatever he feels like you want to talk about. But let's speak the truth. Let's bring the truth to light about Club Africa and all the other bars.
Public Input Opportunity Renaissance Zone Project for DFI BD LLC for rehabilitation project at 122 Broadway. Nicole Crutchfield to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening in front of you, we have a Renaissance Zone application, and the application is to rehab an existing building at 122 Broadway North. Rehabuilt the existing building to improve the basement, the west portion of the first floor, and future retail tenants. The applicant will invest over a million dollars, which exceeds the minimum investment threshold. Based on talking with Commissioner Pepcorn a few months ago, we've started adding this additional information about our presentation. Currently, the real estate taxes are around $16,000. With the abatement, the property owner will benefit $215,000 through the course of the five years. And then at the end of the six years, or the five years, the tax revenue is estimated to be $32,000, so about double the, the impact. All in all, with the investment, you'll see a future value of around $2 billion. The Renaissance Zone Authority did unanimously approve this, and approximately 13,000 square feet total. We do believe this will be a benefit and received a score of 88 of over 100 point scale. The applicant is here, if you have any questions as well.
Don't you have some more pictures?
I'm sorry, I do have some more pictures. So this is, you might know it as the Chinese restaurant. I won't use the term that the city staff used to call it for, but the, you'll see Chase Bank going in there right now and some historic references.
So it's gonna be retail on the first floor? Are they gonna have apartments above?
I think offices above.
Okay. And Dave, this is the Chase Bank, isn't it, that's going in this place?
Yeah, it's gonna be a great addition to the downtown. And actually, the CEO, Jamie Diamond, was here two weeks ago. And to have him come to Fargo, that was a great thing. So I think it'll be a great project.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Not known. I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Pepcorn for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Strand for a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Commissioner Preston?
I need to declare conflict of interest, so I won't be voting or discussing.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand?
What's the conflict?
We're a small investor in the DFI fund.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
B, application and transfer of an alcoholic beverage license from Drunken Noodle to Wasabi Poke Bowl, to Wasabi Poke Bowl. Doing businesses Wasabi Poke Bowl to be located at 562 Second Avenue North. Ownership change.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Steve Spreg, City Auditor. So we have today a Class F alcoholic beverage license, which is a full alcohol, does not allow a bar. It's for in a restaurant where the alcohol service is at a table or a booth. The Wasabi Poke Bowl has been a very great addition to downtown. The people that own it, though, are looking to downsize a little bit, and so they've found somebody that wants to buy it, and so we're transferring the alcohol today, alcohol license today. We've gone through the background check, and it's gone to liquor control, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
So if they're gonna downsize, the owners are moving somewhere else?
Uh, no, they're just, instead of running quite as many businesses that they have, I, I think that, I know they also have Drunken Noodle, and then they have a couple of businesses that don't have alcohol also. So they're, they're very busy.
So anyone present who wants to speak to this transfer? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pepcorn, Preston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Application for a Class F A alcoholic beverage license for Sickies MD Incorporated doing business to Sickies Garage Burgers and Brews to be located at 220, or 2551 45th Street, South Suite 101.
And again, this application, my, my first thought when this came in was, oh, Sickies is gonna move. And when I called Carrie Fernholtz, the applicant, he said, no, this is a second location. So the location is maybe better known as, I gotta get the, Old Chicago. Old Chicago closed a little while ago. So this is an easy fit-up. It's already a restaurant. The applicant, there's, there's a number of people in the, in that application, and they have a number of Sickies restaurants in the tri-state area. This has gone through the background check. The FA license is food and alcohol. It does require more food sales than alcohol, and it does allow them to have the bar, you know, with, with the, also having the table service and that. So it's gone to liquor control and does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
What is the price of that license?
That's the $100,000 initial issuance fee.
Does anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Item 29, Greg Robbins, business owner, would like to address City Commission regarding 32nd Avenue South Construction Project. Greg Roberts, is he here? Robbins? Oh, there he is.
Greetings, everybody, thanks for the time. So we used to have a business in downtown Fargo, love downtown Fargo, it's fantastic. However, we, some things that we experienced there was all the construction, the snow removals, it was hard for our customers to get to us. We had a lot of people requesting us to have a second location in South Fargo. Obviously, they couldn't do that, we couldn't do that. So ultimately, we relocated, we're down on 32nd Avenue and 25th Street. We just found out like a month ago that from a customer coming in saying, oh, you're gonna enjoy your project. I said, what project? We've been down there, we had no idea about it. Nobody's come and talked to us, nothing to the business owners, nobody's heard anything about that. So ultimately, being down there, living down there for 15 hours, or for almost 15 years, we've seen that whole area. Some issues that are coming up in that is, it's gonna leave that South Creek Center boxed in with the construction of what they want to do. I understand it's a done deal, is what we would like to do is have you guys flip flop. And I talked with Tom at the city, he said it could be done if you guys direct them to do it. After COVID, it's just been so difficult for us to try to regoop and recoup and get going, and we're just starting to get that momentum. Now you're gonna do construction right in front of us, that's gonna be worse than COVID. Our center is tough enough to get to us because everybody sees Kirsten Lane, they drive back behind. That's why we put a sign on the back of the building so that they can turn around and drive to the front of the building. It works great, people are coming to us, but once you do that, how are people gonna get to us? It's gonna be, I understand that you guys are gonna come up with the plan, et cetera, et cetera. But we would like to see that flip flop where you go from university to 22nd First. That will buy us a couple more years for all of us independent businesses to help recoup from COVID. And who knows what's gonna happen over the next several months, you know? Nobody knows what the direction that it's going. But we have Chase Bank that is coming down there. You guys want to remove the right-hand turning lane going in there? Do you guys actually know how many people use that turning lane? Tons, 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 and tons. I understand wanting to narrow it, we get a lot of trucks coming down there. Arlette, you're big on walkability. Where Taco John's is and Subway, there's two bus stops, one on each side. The city wants to propose their crazy turn lane. Well, if they do that, they need a stoplight there. You want walkability, you want to protect people from walking, you have to put a stop sign there. Sorry, guys, there's one on the north side, if you go north on 25th, there's one by the two banks down there, why not have one right there? We're gonna be boxed in, this is what's gonna happen. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna go west on 32nd. People now are gonna go down through the 27th, in through the neighborhoods, 33rd and a half, drive by all these townhomes, pop out on the east side of East Centia, drive north to go to the stoplight. You guys now just drove all the traffic going around there. I don't think you guys have truly thought about all that. I'm down there, I see it happen all the time. I watch people trying to cross from Subway back and forth, back and forth. People from the hospital trying to walk over to Taco John's. It is just crazy and nuts. You want walkability, you gotta put a stoplight there. If you don't do that, and you guys still put your crazy turn lanes where you can turn right, you can turn left, but you can't turn left, how are the people gonna walk across? You didn't solve anything. You still created a problem. It's great with what you guys want to do, the roads down there do need repair, that's fantastic, yeah, there are a lot of potholes, trust me, I know, I hit them, but you need a stoplight there, you're boxing us in, you got a bus stop on each side, people cross over from, we're all trying to recover. You got new businesses, Chase Bank, you guys are talking about Chase Bank, they don't even know about this project. What would they think if they found out that this project was gonna happen? You got Chipotle opening up over there in Family Fair in Caribou. What's gonna happen to those guys? And I just talked to a business owner of the South Point Center today, that's kitty corner where Chase Bank is going, Paul Bernabucci, he's a partner of Provident Partners LLC. He said, I can speak to him, he had no idea about that. Where's the communication, guys? These are owners of strip centers, you guys want to do a project, and these owners don't even know anything about it. He said, I didn't know about it. His exact words was, well, this is a disaster. His next words followed up was, good job, city, they're trying to sneak in a project on us. And you guys did sneak it in. Nobody knew about it. I looked it up, I went back, yeah, you guys had a meeting back in August 12th to August 27th, 2024, public comment. I didn't know anything about it. Where are we supposed to see that at, in the forum? Who reads the forum? I don't see the notices. You want to read the forum, you have to be a paid subscriber to do it. How do I do that? I'm not a paid subscriber to it. So how am I gonna know that notice from a year ago, dealing with COVID, where businesses were closed? You guys do a fantastic job, I've been trying to get ahold of Jeremy for ever, and he hasn't returned my calls, but that's okay, he's working hard, he's a cool guy. Tom finally did talk to me, and he said, it's only up to you guys to do the reverse. He said, it will be a challenge, but we can do it. That's what we're asking for that neighborhood. A lot of other businesses would love to be here, but this is pretty short notice. Tony, thanks for getting us on the agenda to talk about this. But it's a problem, and I think you guys need to slow that down a little bit and maybe find some other ways and avenues to tackle that project. So I guess that's about all I can say, but it's, it's a serious problem, and walkability is a problem, but you're dealing with it in the wrong intersection, the wrong intersection, guys, sorry.
So Greg, we could get another visit with the owners. Tom, are you gonna address this tonight, or Jeremy here? Who's, who's addressing this tonight from engineering?
So.
Jeremy? Brenda, the whole team, I guess, okay.
Well, I think we'll take questions from you guys. I think, I think you've heard the gentleman, and so if that forms some questions, I think I'd just like to address whatever questions you have.
Discussion, Commissioner Preston?
So can you explain to us how and why the phasing was decided on like you did?
Okay, I think I'll let, do you want to step in on that one? We're gonna kind of take team and get you guys the answers you're looking for.
Yeah, this is a federally funded project, so we applied through MetroCock to DOT probably in late 2017. Heard word in 2018 that we had the funds for this next coming year. We had done the interchange work and work west of the interstate in 2017, and the road condition from where that project ended going east, we knew we needed to go all the way to university, but it's too long a stretch to do in one project. So the payment condition on the western end is in the worst shape. Street Department's been out there a number of times doing quite a bit of work, so that's why the western portion was, is, has been selected. And the, the, obviously, you guys probably remember, two years after this project's gonna be done, we'll go to university.
Is there any change in federal funding either way?
Yes, there is. So the first project has 4.5 million, estimated 4.5 million, and then the project in two years is 7.5. So we'd be short 3 million to flop them.
So you'd be short funds if you've switched them?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Mr. Preston?
So can you just go through how businesses were contacted or communicated with?
Yeah, this is the, this is, this is a dilemma, we talked about it this morning. So this is a federally funded project, everything that our consultant does goes through DOT policies and procedures. So what is recommended is you put a press release out, so the DOT put a press release out, the city put a press release out, and then you put an ad in the forum newspaper. Greg is correct, it is difficult to pick up a piece of paper and read the forum these days. But in addition to that, we did, we had Flint Communication on our team, we, we did more than what the minimum is, we, so when we put out a press release, it goes to our Twitter, Fargo Streets account, I think with the City of Fargo account, and on the City of Fargo Facebook page, and the Fargo Streets Facebook page. And then the cool thing, the techie thing is, we did an advertisement on Facebook, and we, we, geofencing is what you call it, but you put a radius around a certain location, and if you go through there with Facebook and your phone is activated with GPS, that ad for our public meeting will pop up as you're scrolling. So I think that the data today, we had 400,000 scrolls and, no, 250,000 scrolls and 400 clicks for that public input meeting. So it is difficult, I agree, it is difficult to reach out to people these days, but we did try.
Are we gonna help to get traffic to their business?
So the, the access at 27th Street, so if you zoom out, this is, these are section line roads, 32nd Avenue, 25th Street. His issues are not unlike other section line roads, 25th Street, 13th Avenue. Just think, you can think of all of them around town. So you, you always have the dilemma of access versus mobility. So in the world of traffic engineering, ideal signal spacing is a quarter mile, plus or minus 1,200 feet. From 25th Street to 28th Street, which is one block west, is right around 1,400 feet. So that's a good number. If you would put a signal at 27th Street, you'd be 600 feet from 28th and 800 feet from 25th Street. So the spacing just doesn't work. So the next best alternative was a three-quarter access, which is, the beauty of that is, we don't limit your access coming in, but we do make it a little bit difficult for you to make a left out. And the reason why we want to prevent those lefts out is those are the dangerous T-bone angle crashes. There's probably more accidents at crashes, I should say, at signalized intersections, but the majority of those are rear ends. At unsignalized, they're, they're the angle crashes which hurt people. So that, that's, we needed to do something, and the signal wasn't the right answer, so the three-quarter was the next best option.
And then, can, can I, can I just clarify, were you asking too about maintaining traffic through construction?
Yes.
Right? So I don't know if you or Tom?
Well, yeah, it's, this is an arterial road, we haven't looked at the final plans yet, but our, our plan is to get two lanes of traffic through there at all times, through all construction.
Does that help with signage as well? You say his business is over here, or how do you do that?
We will do that on, just like we do on another project.
Commissioner Garrick?
If you were to switch the timeline on it, you wouldn't be losing federal dollars, it's just you're planning on three and seven, so seven and three, correct? Million?
So correct, we, if we were gonna flip it and start at university, my feeling is then we would have to do something shortened. So originally, the first phase would go to just east of 25th Street, and the next phase was gonna go from there to university. We would have, I think we would have to look at a shortened project and move that termini between projects. I mean, unfortunately, you know, they've started design, and so we would be looking at trying to figure out that schedule.
What's the length of schedule of construction?
One season.
One season, Tony?
But just to be clear, we're not losing federal dollars, because I heard that we're short money, but it's not that we're losing federal funds if we, if we flip this, right? The federal funds are still there regardless.
Correct.
Okay. Is it, does it make sense to switch it? I mean?
So here would be my opinion, I'll let these guys jump in if they'd like. So we are strong into design on the west side. So to flip it, we would have to stop that process and start them designing in a new section. In a section that we probably haven't had detailed conversation with the commission on what that section will look like yet either. And so what that would probably do then is delay a bid opening till very late spring of next year, which more than likely typically impacts our project costs. So right now, it's on task to be bid
February.
In February, you'd be looking at maybe an April-type bid opening, and typically, we see those projects, the costs really go up.
But just to be clear, this is one business owner coming to us, we don't know how many many other business owners are out there, and you've not heard this before.
Correct.
You've not had anybody say, let's flip it. Okay, Commissioner Garrick?
That was kind of the vein I was gonna go down to was, there are businesses between university and 25th as well that are recovering as well. You have Dairy Queen, you have Lorimer Bockers, you have restaurants and things like that, along that way too. So I hear what you're saying, and I empathize with you, but to move this down the road would negatively impact those businesses as well, maybe not as many, but it would have an impact on them as well.
And what, if I can jump in, you know, as we get in design, we're gonna be back to you guys. We're gonna be back to you asking for incentives for the project to help expedite it and to help minimize that impact to the adjacent property owners. We do it on all arterials to just help expedite that process and get that traveling, gain the traveling people back on the roads. And so that's, that's truly how we try and help minimize that impact to the businesses.
Could your team meet with Greg and the owners that he's talking about, just to visit about how to keep their business? And, Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm hearing also today, and we've heard quite a bit of questioning about the right turn lanes being eliminated off to 25th, if I recall. How are you sorting all that out? That's the topic I think we've heard, I've heard the most feedback about, is concerns about eliminating those right turn lanes. Are we reconsidering that, or is it an option? Are we, are you all convinced still, and we're still on path to go with what had been approved where those right turn lanes are not there? And are you okay with all that?
Yep.
Two, the only right turn, I just want to confirm something that I'm not, I'm understanding, the only, there's only one right turn lane that's there today that will not be put back. Right? Okay, so it's the westbound north?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we're comfortable with what you guys approved. It's a, it's not, it's not a make or break movement, so, you know, you weigh the traffic mobility versus the shortened crossing distance for pedestrians, it's, we're comfortable moving forward.
I think what you're asking, Commissioner Strand, is would we reconsider that right-hand turn lane? Because you've heard complaints, I've heard complaints. Jeremy, are you saying you're looking at both options right now?
No, no, you guys made the final decision.
To get rid of that right-hand lane?
Yep.
So if you wanted to reconsider, what would have to happen?
We, well, we have a, so Apex Engineering is going through their design right now, they're by no means, I mean, they're not done with design, but we'd have to inform them very soon. We do have a design meeting later this week.
But you haven't heard much from the public on this issue? Should we give them your name, your phone number, or give them your email address? What should we do?
I think I've heard from less than, really, the only people I've heard of are forwarded emails from you, you guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Preston?
If I could just say something here, I, you know, I've been a very strong advocate for walkability, and it's tough making those kinds of changes incorporated into street reconstruction, I know that. But I just have the sense that, for some reason, this project feels like it was rushed. The, you know, I'm thinking about the redesign of Broadway and how that happened, and granted, that took a long time, but it involved the businesses that were impacted by it. And it, it just feels like with this project, and I'm sure it's related to COVID, there probably was not a real good opportunity for that to happen. It would just caution us that when we go into other reconstruction projects, that we are thinking about, and, you know, the long-term plan is try to make things more walkable. And, and by that, I mean slowing down traffic and making the traffic calmer. So thinking through how that could be incorporated into reconstruction, I think is so terrifically important. And it feels like it was just kind of an afterthought with this one. So I think
So I think um, so I think there's always a lot of different things that that we take into consideration. We're we're looking at the corridor and especially with the limited right of way that we had there. I can be honest with you. We we were really focusing on the boulevard trees. They're beautiful. How do we save the trees? And and we've kind of had those conversations before too of of sometimes we were getting so focused on one thing. You know, we are looking at different ways for that road configuration to be able to support those beautiful overarching boulevard trees. And so um we completely have heard the conversations we've had. We know we have way more flexibility as we move east to have some more options um for that calming as we go east. And we look forward to incorporating um that into that uh layout.
Commissioner Pepper, uh Pep Carney?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to refresh everybody's memories. So this has come through the city commission. And we've had public comment, uh and then the initial proposal by the engineering department, then we, I think several of us had questions. They came back and did a redo of the whole whole thing. And then we had the public, so we've had multiple opportunities for public comment. So it isn't, uh I I guess to say that nobody knew what was going on, I have a little bit of a question about that because it's been in front of us twice, correct? And so whenever it's in front of us, we we welcome public discussion every time. And so to me, uh to say you didn't know anything about it, uh I don't know. I I that's a little bit hard for me to believe because it's on our agenda, correct? That's part of it. And you can make public comments. So I I think the engineering department, and they did make changes after we had some pushback from this, from the commissioners. So I just want to refresh everyone's memory that this has not been rushed. Uh this, it's been in front of us. This is the third time. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Could we just, Greg Robbins has some other business owners he referenced. Could you guys work with that team and try to work with them during construction time? What's gonna happen and messaging? And I think then Brenda, we may want to reconsider how we do notices, whether we do letters individually to every business affected or do something. Cause if you're saying landlords don't know about it, it seems like, you know, they they don't seem to know about it. Not everybody reads the form. Although we've got two reporters in here tonight, so you guys can work on that, huh? Okay.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Lee, it's, hey, I'm standing right here. I've talked to several business owners in our stretch. Nobody knew anything about it, okay? There's a problem with communication. Got it? Arlette, um thank you very much for talking about the the involvement with the businesses on Main Avenue. That Main Avenue project, I was involved with conversations in regards to Broadway project. What you guys went above and beyond on those projects, getting business owners and and stuff involved and and talking to them. Not not once has anybody from the city came and talked to any business owners whatsoever, not once. I I just want to make sure that that is clarified, that you understand that nobody was communicated with. Number two is when you deal with walkability, I hear what you guys are saying, but I still have not heard, how are you guys going to handle people walking across twenty seventh street going across? That's a problem. A stoplight's your only fix for that. You guys are the city. You guys can time stoplights.
Greg, you made this point before and stoplights, I'll stop you now. We can have this discussion later. We have to finish our commission meeting. So please take your conversation to the engineering department. Now have your conversations. Commissioner Pep Carney, send a comment.
Well, I I just want to reiterate, it's like, this is the third time through here. And and so to me, to say basically that it's the engineer's fault that they didn't come and meet with you, part of it is, uh as a business owner, you gotta be aware of what's going on in your surroundings. And so to me, it's been, anyway, I've already said this. I just wanna, I don't wanna repeat myself, but it's like, you, the businesses have to be aware of what's going on as well. And to blame the engineers, you don't know what's going on, uh I don't accept that.
Is there any motion by any of the commissioners? We'll go on to next business. We're gonna have an update on the Municipal Airport Authority on their capital improvement plan. Sean Doberstein to explain. Is Eric here tonight too? Eric Lind or no?
No, Vice Chair Engen is here.
Okay.
So good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sean Doberstein, Executive Director for the Municipal Airport Authority. And I was asked to give a quick update on some projects that are in progress right now and some that will be starting real soon and some that we hope to commence here within the next year. Members of the board here, Eric Lind is our chair, Rick Engen, Vice Chair, John Cosgriff, Tammy Lynn, and James Capitan. And thanks to Commissioner Strand for being our liaison commissioner. We'll do this in different phases of the airport. The first is the terminal area, development area, right around the terminal building. Uh you'll see arrows to a number of different projects uh that have been completed or that were in the process of of starting. Uh the first, the upper left there, Gate Four Passenger Bridge, um that's one of the older bridges at the Terminal Building. We're looking at replacing that bridge with a more capable aircraft boarding bridge. That's about five hundred thousand dollars and we're working with an engineering firm on that right now. Top right, West Terminal Apron Reconstruction Plan. Uh we're working with Mead and Hunt to put together the design for that project. Uh Phase One is estimated to cost seven million. The total project's about sixteen million. That concrete on the north side of the apron with the aircraft park right now was put in in the nineteen eighty four, nineteen eighty five timeframe. So it's past its useful, useful life and needs to be replaced. Going down on the on the far right side, Proposed East Economy Parking Lot. We're working with an engineering firm now to pave that area there. Right now, that's grass. We use that for overflow during our peak times in the February, March timeframe. We're looking at paving that and making that into a the East Economy Lot to um complement the West Economy Lot that we currently have in place on the west side of the property. On the middle there, Parking Access Revenue Control System. The Airport Authority awarded a contract to Flash uh to update all of the parking access control equipment as you enter and exit the lot. Uh we have a kickoff meeting for that on on Thursday. Parking Lot Exit Plaza, you'll see some uh renditions of that coming up here. Uh we have TL Stro Architects on board to start the design of the Parking Lot Exit Plaza. The booths that are there now when you exit the parking lot were nineteen eighty four vintage. Uh they were installed nineteen eighty five when the original terminal opened in January of eighty six. They are well beyond um the need for replacement. Our new snow removal equipment facility and expansion of the existing maintenance shop that's in the bottom left there. That um there's a few punch list items left on that there and I do have a picture of that coming up, showing you what that looks like. That is the new uh snow removal equipment maintenance shop. Inside, you can see all the different pieces of snow removal equipment uh that we have currently. We have a couple more pieces on order that we'll take delivery of later this year, early next year. This is the concept drawing for the Exit Plaza. Um as you exit the current parking lot location, estimated to be about one point two million. Uh hopefully we'll be opening bids for that in the spring. And like I said, that East Economy Lot, we showed there earlier. One thing that the Airport Authority has uh looked at is moving the Exit Plaza to the south end of the parking lot. So if you see the picture on the the bottom right there, um we're looking at the possibility of moving the Exit Plaza to the south end of the parking lot. We'll see um if that's possible. I think there's gonna be some traffic issues and of course, right now, that's the primary place where we store snow and and remove snow from the parking lot. Air cargo area development, um we'll have a short video after this presentation here to show you what's happening with your cargo area. Lot lots happening up there right now. You see in the top left, the new North Dakota National Guard Operational Readiness Center. That's a thirty two million dollar project. Uh they have their ribbon cutting tomorrow for that. The UPS Sort Facility, uh right there where the UPS logo is, that's gonna be opening up, I believe, about September thirteenth will be their first uh flight. Bemidji Aviation is building a hangar uh there that will open this fall, early next spring. They are the feeder for United Parcel Service. And then in the the bottom left there, the new air cargo apron, that's seventeen acres of seventeen inch Portland cement concrete. Uh that's nearing completion right now. Uh the contractor should be done with that on or about uh September second. And currently, right now, the local share of that is about four point nine million. That was short of what the current federal funding was for that project. North General Aviation Development Area, the the top right, the northeast part of the airport. Fargo Jet Center announced and the Airport Authority approved, working with them to expand their current ground lease with us. They're looking at about a hundred and four thousand square foot of additional space to accommodate demand for aircraft that are being based at the airport. That'll be some offices in in hangar area. That'd be a multimillion dollar investment on behalf of Fargo Jet Center. Like I say, hopefully they'll be breaking ground this fall. That entire area, there's the entire Fargo Jet Center complex. Customs and Border Protection is is uh just to the right of that white roof building that you see next to the apron that's up there. South General Aviation Area and Air National Guard Base Development, uh lots happening down in that area. Uh a couple of small projects, some concrete rehabilitation out in front of what we'll call the Group Six Hangar. Uh that's at bottom. Kind of in the center part of the picture there, East Terminal Building, uh which was the old passenger terminal at one time before we moved to the west side of the the property. That needs a roof and that will commence uh sometime next summer. Top right, uh tomorrow is the groundbreaking for this, one nineteenth wing operations center. It's about a seventeen and a half million dollar project and estimated completion date is fiscal year twenty twenty three. Here's just some other projects uh that are currently underway, terminal area study, um about ten months to complete. The Airport Authority approved that contract with Mead and Hunt about two weeks ago. It'll take about ten months to complete. This is the kickoff required document that the Federal Aviation Administration needs before we can justify the expansion of the passenger terminal. Uh we're hoping to uh expand the terminal to add enough space to add at least four more boarding bridges. We have five right now at the terminal to meet demand and also to meet uh interest from carriers that want to operate additional flights, but uh we don't have the gate capacity to to handle. Uh we have Obernell Engineering working on a HVAC pathogen mitigation uh project right now. Um they're doing the design of that and we'll get that out to bid here shortly. Their estimated cost to uh upgrade the air ventilation and pathogen mitigation in the terminal at about five hundred thousand. Hopefully we'll start that in early twenty twenty two. Security Access Control System, some of that dates back to nineteen ninety one, nineteen ninety two. We're looking at upgrading that. That's under the design phase right now and will be out to bid here hopefully by the end of the year, early part of twenty twenty two. That's about a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar project. Glake Hall Pump Station and Force Main Design. Right now, we have two large underground pits where we capture the deicing fluid. That's uh runoff from the aircraft. One is by the passenger terminal. The other one will go into operation this winter. That's up on the cargo apron. Somehow we have to get those two connected and then we've been working with Jim Howzour and the wastewater treatment plant to run the affluent, the the runoff, if you will, up to probably the lagoons that are north of the airport. And there'll be more to follow on that here as we get together and and work on the design and and how to handle that deicing runoff. Terminal Apron Reconstruction, I mentioned that a little earlier. Uh the FAA is working with Mead and Hunt right now on the design of that and for the reconstruction of that terminal building. Some snow removal equipment acquisition. We have a front end loader on on order and another large airfield snow plow. Uh we'll take delivery of later this year, early next year. Airport Property Environmental Clearance Review, Mead and Hunt is doing that as well. That is a process whereby all of the airport property is looked at in terms of wetland mitigation, historic artifacts uh review, so that when someone comes to us in February and wants to build a hangar, they can start in the spring. Right now, we don't have that capability. This study will will uh allow that to happen. In your packet, and I think what was available to the public was a um very small print, but is the FAA format for our capital improvement plan, which really focuses on fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, but it does go out for about ten years. I think that was in your packet. Uh if we look just at fiscal year, calendar year twenty twenty two, it's about nineteen point six million dollars that we have planned. Right now, we're about eleven point nine million short in terms of funding for what we have on our docket with the FAA and the State Aeronautics Commission. And we're in the process of applying for additional federal and state grants uh to cover that shortfall. So um just a little bit on on how we're doing employment wise, not really to the capital plan. June was the second busiest June on record. July was the second busiest July on record, just a few under passengers short of the all time record in July. So we've recovered out of COVID very rapidly, but we're starting to see some declines right now in passenger reservations uh starting about twenty one, twenty two days ago and going through the fall and winter periods. So you can see the two thousand nineteen trend line, which is what we're comparing to. We're almost back up to that level. You can see where we were in twenty twenty with with COVID. A little bit on cargo, um we're up three percent uh over the record pace that we had in twenty twenty. Uh four hundred and twenty million, two hundred and seventy thousand tons of landed weight of cargo. That doesn't mean how much the packages weigh onboard the aircraft. That is the actual weight of the aircraft that that land at the airport. That's how the Federal Aviation Administration has airports across the country account for cargo. It's it's based on the uh maximum gross landed weight of the aircraft.
Will Amazon make a difference, Sean? The Amazon fulfillment center?
It will. Right now UPS has that contract. I had some discussions today with UPS and they're not really totally sure how it's going to work. Amazon does have the option to bring their own aircraft here and uh stay tuned for what what may happen with that. So with that, that's the end of that kind of presentation. So if you want to roll the the video, this video was taken um a few weeks ago, probably in the July timeframe. Um if I can bring that up. It kind of gives you an aerial bird's eye view of uh this large cargo apron expansion project, uh but all of that pavement is in place right now. Let the technology people do that. All right. So this is an aerial view, shows the UPS building right down there in front of you, shows northern improvement out uh working on the cargo apron, uh pouring those lanes that are out there, that seventeen inch concrete. You can see the frame for the Bemidji Aviation Hangar that I talked about in the back. That's the UPS feeder. But um it's a pretty massive project. Uh UPS is really excited. This is the first gateway city and project that UPS has opened in the United States in nineteen years. So this is, they don't do this very often. So this is a pretty big deal for this region. You can see their neighbor FedEx is just down the line. But when you look at all that concrete that has to be plowed multiple times uh a day during storm events, uh it takes a lot of equipment, a lot of manpower and a lot of fuel to to do that. So you can kind of see how they they pave in lanes. Like I say, all of this was completed about the end of July. And um just kind of gives you an idea of the magnitude of um what that project entails. So not quite sure how long the video goes. You can cut that out if if you want, but kind of gives you an idea of what's what's happening. It's uh the cargo apron is is really a great proximity to the Amazon project. Digikey is directly across the road from the airport and is a huge, huge customer of of UPS and FedEx as well. They produce uh thousands of packages every day that fly out of Fargo all over the world is where those packages go. So I don't know if you have any questions there, but uh just kind of.
Commissioners have any questions, Sean, at this time? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. And you know, Sean, I'm, I I want to thank you for you and your Commissioner, uh Vice Chair for coming tonight, Mr. Engen. Here's my most basic question. And and you know, this, all of last year, we were all trying to figure out the relationship the city has with the Airport Authority. And and that was very contentious at times, trying to get our arms around what's happened in the past and what's the best future going forward. And there was a moment in time you saw a lot of us where people like me, I was digging my heels in and deciding that in my head, the history of the airport's relationship with the city was what needed to direct us going forward. And yet that, from nineteen sixty nine to now, times are very different. And the city's different and the airport's different. And 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 I believe we all kind of, my sense is we all came to an understanding that that fight isn't a fight to have about the future, the airport and the city. And and at the mayor's behest, to a degree, all of us in the, we we've, we've come to the point in time where we agreed to have a a an amicable separation of the city and the airport. In that, as I understand it, the Airport Authority would be on its own feet. And we've been breathing life into that relationship change going forward. Uh we have a memo, a memorandum of understanding with terms that have been just worked at, worked through and all that. So that's where we're at in this overall journey in in the relationship. But I I'll be honest, and the reason this is before the city tonight is it's not just an update. There's a request for two mils in our budget for to fund this airport, which comes to about one point four million dollars. And and I didn't see that coming. I I maybe I'm naive, but in in my view, when the airport was going on its own, I assumed, and you, we can't assume things, uh but I was under the understanding that the airport would be self-funding and that the city's relationship would be different going forward. And that, and 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 I'll qualify, by statute, as I understand it, you can, cities can fund up to four mils for the airport if we choose to and or agree to. So my question is this, is with this request for two mils. So my question is this, is with this request for two mills, how does that define separation if the city's still on the hook or expected to fund that?
Well, the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Fargo have always funded the mill levy for capital improvements. That's what it's used for. It's not used for operations. It goes into a separate fund just for capital improvement projects. So all of the investment that you see there, the approximately 12 million that were short of funding, all of that mill levy money goes towards capital improvements. The transition isn't about the internal operations. It's about the payroll. It's about the accounting system. It's about how the phone rings, how the computer works. It's the internal operations of the airport. That's what the difference is. But the taxpayer funds in this sense for the mill levy don't support operations. They support the capital projects.
Is the airport, might I continue, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Is the Airport Authority of the mindset that this relationship is contracted and agreed upon and that we have an agreement to provide these mills? Or is it a request hoping we do?
Well, it's always a request. That's how the state statute reads, that a few sessions ago, they changed the word shall to may. Now, if we had debt, then you have to provide the mill levy for whatever the agreed-upon amount is. But the legislature changed that to may. You know, there's 89 publicly funded airports in the state of North Dakota. Eighty-four are governed by airport authorities. So that gives you a sense of the confidence that elected officials and the taxpayers have in each of those entities on what an airport authority does. And I would say all of them, or majority of them, are funded through mill levies, whether they use it for operations at some of the smaller airports. I'm not sure. I think West Fargo probably uses it for operations and capital. We strictly use it just for capital projects, not the day-to-day operations. We're funded through the day-to-day operations, through car rental revenue, parking revenue, percentage of gross revenue agreements with concessionaires and/or through landing fees, terminal rents.
Mr. Garrick.
Sean, how long have you been asking for two mills? It seems to me that it's been two mills pretty steady for some time.
Yeah, it's been, I think, two mills for a while. It dropped to one back maybe when Mayor Lindgren is here, Mayor Furness, I'm not sure, but it's been two mills as long as I've been there. And there's been thoughts of trying to increase it more to, the more that we have in terms of funding to get some of these projects done, the lesser costs. I think you heard Brenda say, you know, having the funds upfront and instead of extending them, some of these projects over in phases tends to save us a lot of dollars. And it'd be nice to have the full four mills so that we can get some of these projects done without phasing, but we know what that battle might be.
Don't push it. My point being is, you've been here a long time. It's been two mills as long as you can remember and two mills as long as I can remember. So in my mind, it's not a new request. If they were trying to change the number, I think that would be a new request. But for long-term planning, you're relying on these two mills to put in the ledger for your CIP for two, five, 10 years to say, well, we're hoping this is what we're counting on coming in. So if we then cut that, then it puts a hole in that CIP like it would for any, you know, asset that we have. And it is a city airport.
It is.
Correct. It is a city airport. So like you said, the separation in my mind was never that all of a sudden the city airport is now off the city ledger. It's that we cut those ties with the manning and the pay and finances and things like that. It wasn't just a separation completely. It was those services that we stopped providing and they stopped paying for. So in my mind, this is not a new request. This is normal procedure and I don't have a problem with it. If you were asked for more, then I'd have to ask a whole lot more questions, which I don't think you're planning on doing that. But the two mills has been steady for decades.
Commissioner Preston.
So let me just clarify, the 20 or so million of capital improvement projects that you've identified for 2022, the 11 million that's a shortfall, are you planning to use the two mills for that 11 million? Or when I remember, it said federal funding or federal grants of some sorts. What's the mix in there?
Yeah, the two mills would be considered the local share. I mean, we're hoping to get federal and state funds to cover the majority of that gap, but there's always a local share, Commissioner Preston, in each project that we do. And whatever that local share is in terms of projects that are eligible into the airport improvement program or the passenger facility charge program, we can ultimately get all of that local share back through a passenger facility charge program at some point. It might take a number of years. So when you purchase an airline ticket, there's a $4.50 fee. The airlines collect that and then remit back to the airport's $4.39. They keep 11 cents for their processing. And we're generating somewhere between 1.2 and 1.4 million in passenger facility charge fees, but all of that money is paying us back for our local share of projects that have been completed back maybe six, seven years.
Can I do a follow-up, actually a follow-up for two questions? So I apologize, I'm new to this this year. So in the past years with capital improvement projects, have you always used the two mills to?
Always.
Be that local share?
Yes. Whether it's for equipment that we purchase without federal dollars or if we put it into a passenger facility charge program at some point, or just for projects whereby the local share isn't covered by the FAA, maybe they determine it's not eligible for the airport improvement program or the passenger facility charge program. But the mills are always used for capital, yes, every year.
So the question, the question is for you, Mayor. I can't remember, were these two mills included in your budget?
The Airport Authority put into the auditor that they were going to request it in April, I think it was, Sean, so we were aware of it. And we did have it in our budget for the 53 mills.
Okay, so it's included in the 53?
Right now, yes.
Yeah, we certified the mill levy, I think, in July at our July 27th meeting. It's actually, you certify a dollar amount not to exceed 2.0 mills. That's how Mond Pleasure and others had us do that. So it's a dollar amount, but not to exceed 2.0 mills.
Any other discussion, questions? Commissioner Peppard.
Just one thing real quick, and this is my mistake. I assumed we were going to do a complete audit. I made a request of that maybe two years ago, and now that has not been done. And so I apologize for that. I will demand a complete audit. And now we'll run it through the Finance Committee, I guess. We meet on Friday and then we'll bring it to the Commission, but that's my mistake. I assumed we were going to have that done. I contacted the staff today and that's not done, but we have no idea the financial situation there. The Airport Authority meets and they do a superficial review of the bills. They do not do a financial review. And so before we do anything, we need to have an audit to find out what's going on there. And so that's, I will not make a motion, but it will go through the Finance Committee and then it will come to the City Commission, because I requested that two years ago. I very clearly remember that and it hasn't been done. So I'm very disappointed about that, but it will be done. Thank you.
Well, the Airport Authority is part of the city's comprehensive annual financial review.
So, Mr. Chair.
We're audited.
Mr. Chair, so what happens now is they are apart and so we do a very high superficial review. We do not do a complete audit and that's what needs to be done. A complete audit is where you get into the weeds and you find out exactly where all the money's going and that's what needs to be done. Thank you.
Ken Costin, you comment to that? Have they had an audit or what is it that are included in our audit?
Yes, Commissioners, they have been included in the city's audit and it's treated just as any other department of the city. So they do an audit of the city as a whole. The items that they spend particular attention to would be the federal grants, because they receive airport improvement grants, like what Sean just talked about. So when they have a major project, they will audit at a detailed level. We're not setting them aside as a separate entity, because it's all rolled into our financial statements. So what Dave is saying is correct. We haven't had a separate audit, if you will. Years ago, when I first started, they were having a separate audit and then it was eventually rolled into the city's audit on a more comprehensive basis. And it's been under that business model ever since. So.
I think, I think what Dave's requesting in a sense, Sean, so for instance, your tonnage has gone up and got different revenue from that. Your passengers are coming back. There's a variety of different things. So for the city, what we do is we give a revenue projection that Kent does for us, changes how much capital we're buying. So we have an operating budget, we have a capital budget, and then we have a personnel budget. And I think what we don't see in clarity, and you do do this, I'm sure, but what we don't see is the changes. So I'm sure on your freight, you're getting more freight landing fees or whatever you would call them, and you've had some fluctuation. Obviously, had passengers go down, you've had a lot of different things move the last three years. So I think for clarity for us, we're just trying to see where's your revenue, where's your expenses? And you balance that, that's fine, but it's just more of a, is there a way of doing a more, one that just looks at the airport, similar to how we look at the city of Fargo? Kent, would there be a way of showing it, breaking down those three areas and what's changed from last year to this year?
Yeah, our 2022 budget is in the city's system. It's all there just as it's presented to you for all the other departments. It does show the changes year over year for all of those revenue streams, all of those expense streams. It's in the system. Commissioner Strand's aware of that because they got a copy of that.
But we could pull it out separate if we needed to. You've got that right?
Yeah, I mean, they pulled it out separate for our board. It's presented to the Airport Authority. Commissioner Strand was in on our budget meeting. It's in the same format that you see. It's in the system, so there isn't anything that's changed.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm going to go back to my fundamental question. If we are, and the city and the Airport Authority are parting ways and you're going to be your own truly independent entity, and we've been working on that for months, this hasn't surfaced that the continuation of this financial support from the city is assumed. You know, we all saw some very, very challenging moments when we were addressing the services the city provided, the airport, for less than $100,000. And people called us power grabbers, money grubbers, you know, abusers, that we didn't respect the airport. I mean, we went through quite a bit of turmoil. I think we can all agree. And we had a mediator, we spent a few months trying to mediate our relationship. And in the end, again, I might be just very naive and I'm just being very frank, in the end, I embraced and we embraced, all of us have embraced, a separation of the airport. So you can stand on your own feet. So you are truly an independent entity. You now have all your own employees. They used to be ours. You have your own pension plans, you have your own health plans coming, you have all of that in place for your own people. But somehow or other, this request for $1.4 million carried forward as if, as if we all assumed that's going to be the case. Now, in my mind, I don't know how you can, how we can have it both ways, where you're on your own, but we still fund it. You know, we had a moment in time a few years ago where some of us naively stuck our foots in our mouths and suggested that there's people who'd like a parking ramp. I'm just reminding us, but some of us wanted a discussion about a parking ramp and we were told, that's none of your business, that's our business, you're not in charge of that, we're in charge of this. And now, I'll say this, had we decided and agreed to talk about a parking ramp and that the city's role going forward would be using our mills to do that, I'd be all for it. If we proactively came to the understandings now, when you're separate, how well and if the city will fund additionally, as per statute, allow fundings to go to you, what it would be used for. But we haven't done that. We don't have agreements in place. We don't have contracts in place. We don't have terms in place. We're separating. Yet the request is still there. So I'm having a real difficult time, and I'm saying with the highest regard for our Airport Authority. I want, the city of Fargo needs to know, we have an amazing airport facility and people, but you are going on your own. You've asked to do that and we've offered that. But this, to me, is a monkey wrench thrown in that conversation. I don't know how you can be on your own but still get the funding. I don't know how we can offer this funding if the city is not the airport still. And I don't want to go back to that square one where that discussion resurfaces, well, maybe, maybe we shouldn't separate. I don't want to go back to that. I want a separation, but I want a clean one. And I believe the airport should stand on its own feet financially.
Any other comments or discussion? Glad to see the parking machineries are going to change. I know the downtown ones work great and it'd be fun to see an update on that. It's good to see UPS finally building a building. You guys are really moving forward on that. And I think we all had questions about freight. That's fantastic. Look at your freight rates that you've got and it's starting to recover. We're going to talk about Delta later and different type of Delta, but we'll kind of talk about what's going on, so appreciate that. Any other comments or discussion? Sean, Mr. Strand.
So Mayor, where are we at with the budget?
In the budget, we have a 53 mills, two mills are the airport's mills that we've included in the budget. I think if we're going to go to serious discussion to remove those two mills, we'd have to have a serious discussion with the Airport Board, because that's not what they're expecting. And they've made commitments, I would, as you've shown, over the next three to five years, anticipating that mill and the ability to pay for capital projects.
With the FAA and the State Aeronautics Commission as well, yeah.
Because I mean, you always talk about five-year plan CIP, so if we pulled it, we'd have to really have a discussion about that for the future plans.
Mr. Strand.
So it's in there? As I read our budget overview, it said that there was a request from the airport for two mills, but it wasn't spelled out in there and it wasn't delineated in there. So what we've seen and the public has seen does not include this airport request for 1.4 million. It includes the reference that this has been in there in the past and it will be discussed this year. That's what I saw in our budget.
Okay. So the final budget is in two weeks. We have a discussion on the final budget. We've had the highest expense we can have. The revenue is the same as it's leveled. Either one could be decreased. Can't go higher.
Might I ask this, Mayor? Just theoretically, if the City Commission agreed to not fund this two-mill request, what would the impact to the airport be?
There would be projects that wouldn't be completed, probably would be delayed, which would increase the cost for all the taxpayers, the Airport Authority, less federal share, less state share. Yeah, it would, it would really set it back in terms of our ability to be able to come up with the local share for the projects that we have on our plate and our capital improvement plan that you saw here tonight and those that are planned for the future.
Mr. German.
Commissioner Preston.
If I could ask, so we have a process for capital improvement projects being approved and included in the budget. Did we go through that process with the airport, with these projects?
While there's the independence of the airport, Sean brings the capital projects to them and he anticipates the city's participation with two mills and how he funds it otherwise is how they fund it. But when he came to us earlier this spring, it was anticipated that they would ask for the two mills. That was not a question of they're going to pull that back. So it would be a complete surprise for them if they did not have that support.
For 30, 40 years, I mean, our capital improvement plan is basically created by the Airport Authority with the FAA and the State Aeronautics Commission. And you're given a copy of it, but the City Commission has never, in the 30-some years I've been there, ever been party to, I guess, what those individual projects are or what have you. That's just not how it's been done for, probably since the Airport Authority was created.
Commissioner Preston.
If I could just do one more follow-up question. So Sean, when you're doing your capital improvements project plan, the city always has a bunch that they feel like they can actually fund and then others that they can't. Can you give us a sense of what you have delayed because of the lack of the 11 million?
Well, the glycol project was delayed because there wasn't enough funding last year as part of our cargo apron project. That would be the connectivity of the glycol storage units that I talked about, getting those connected up to the wastewater treatment plant. Certainly, the design for the West Terminal Apron Construction Project was delayed because we didn't have enough funding to do that. Some of the snow removal equipment was delayed because we didn't have adequate funding for that. And probably the parking lot access revenue control system, that was a big project. We had estimated about 700-some thousand. It came in under 500,000. Some of those things were delayed as well, just because there wasn't adequate funding readily available. That's where the mill levy helps to do that.
And I would say the glycol is very important if you ever had to be de-iced at your airport, right? Because of the delay of people getting out there and that's probably our biggest complaint.
This is the treatment of the runoff, what doesn't hit the airplane and it's the ramp and it runs off into, you know, the storm sewer.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Sean, you know, I'll ask you, have, is this the first you've heard from anybody from the city at all, ever, that there's a question about this assumption? from the city at all, ever, that there's a question about this assumption that the mill levy would continue forward after the separation?
Right, because they really don't have anything one to do with the other. The separation is about the internal controls and, and the operations of who's processing payroll and benefits, how the phone rings, how the computer works, and what accounting system we use. That, that's what the separation is about. The mill levy is, is different. That, that's, that's for the capital projects that have been going on since the Airport Authority was created and the Airport Authorities Act was created way back when.
Mr. Chair?
Completely separate.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
I, I think this is a huge deal, because we're elected officials, and this is public tax dollars that are going to be spent. It's a huge deal. And so to me, for this, I'm not going to support your budget unless you take this out of here. That's, that's my, that's my stance, because to, to me, we're taking tax dollars and it's being spent by an unelected group, and that's not appropriate. Thank you.
Commissioner Strand?
I move that we do not approve this two mills. Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion. I think the difficulty the airport has is that this is a surprise to them, and it would change the ability for them to do things, something that we've been doing for quite some time. And the two mills, we've been doing 30 years now, and you guys make your business plan. So I think it's difficult on the Airport Authority and to Sean, on a business plan, if you're suddenly pulling 1.4 million. It would rather suggest that we have a discussion about it, so it's not a surprise to somebody in the budget. This is a suddenly, two weeks from our budget going through, we're going to vote them down two mills. So I can't support this motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just-
Commissioner Preston?
Make a comment. I certainly agree that the mills are public dollars and your board is not an elected board. So that direct accountability to the public is not there. That's why I think our process needs to be probably scrutinized a bit more in regards to how those requests are coming in, and maybe, maybe there was more information that was given to the mayor prior to it being included in the budget. But we should be scrutinizing that, just like we scrutinize our capital improvement projects, it seems to me. Now, I'm not going to vote in support of this just because it's not necessarily something that you knew was coming perhaps, but I would suggest strongly that we have a better process for the next budget, and that include a little more detail about how the money is getting used and, yeah, a little fuller picture.
And Commissioner Preston, what we did request for the Airport Authority with the MOU is they actually present their budget. So you are correct, and I asked for that budget to be presented in June, and it'd be a full one that he presents to his board that we would see. And that idea was then that Sean could go capital projects, capital improvements, operating costs, just like we do for my budget to you. And then we would say, yes, we agree with that or don't agree with that. That's what I've requested in going forward with the MOU signed. That's what John and I had requested, so we should have that. Any other discussion? Commissioner Garrick?
Yeah, it shouldn't be a surprise if it wasn't in the budget. We had 53 mills requested by the mayor this year, we had 53 last year. Those two mills were for the airport. There was no change in the mill levy whatsoever, which tells me right away that we're asking the same thing for the airport and every other entity that pulls from property taxes, including vector control and things like that. So we, we did all see this, and I'm surprised it's coming up now, quite frankly. So I'm not going to vote to, to do this outside the budget process, but, you know, there are other unelected boards out there. The Dome Authority uses, use tax dollars. They had sales taxes for, for all that time. They weren't very elected by anybody. So to say this is, this is a weird scenario is not true. And as a, as a board, we, we put them in place. We vote each of those members in. So they're, they are the city commission of the airport. The airport is part of the city. Our separation that you talk about, it wasn't a separation to say it's no longer a city airport, it's still a city airport. It just, those services that we were providing earlier were stated, we're not providing anymore, and they're not paying for them anymore either. So we need to, I think we need to be very clear with our language about what they are and aren't, and what we're providing, what we're not providing.
Our entire 2022 budget is entered into the city accounting system as it has been since it was adopted back in 1997. Why you don't have copies of that? It's got all of the operational expenses, all of the operational revenues. Everything that you're asking for has been in that system for, I don't know, when did you shut it off, Kent? It's been there for, well, June, May, June, whenever we entered in the budget, so it's there. I've never been asked to do anything more than enter it into the system, so I, I guess I don't know where the disconnect is.
What the commissioner is asking for is, just as we take a $1.4 million budget and make it frankly clear to everybody in this room what's going on, we would like the airport to do the same. You can tell me to look it up, I have no idea where your data is. So I think the commission is just, let's just see it clearly. Kent can show you how we do it. Combined, you two can bring a report to us to show what's going on. Don't think that's difficult. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. In, if we continue on this path, where the city's still, just because they always did, funding that portion of the airport, why are we separating? What does separation mean? If, if that stays but everything else doesn't? I'm, I'm not so sure I'm any, if, if this is where we're at, and, and if the city's responsible for this amount of funding, you only have a seven-plus million dollar annual budget, or so? And, and if we're responsible for this much of the city's, airport's budget, I would say the city should maintain its control and influence on the airport. We agreed to, to dis, to not, we agreed to separate. We've been breathing life into a separation so that you're your own entity. You've got your own EIN number, you've got, you're, you're on your own very shortly legally, completely.
Eric, are you done, Kent? Eric Johnson had a comment.
Okay.
Thought it might help, you know, we're in the, this year, we're working through the separation process, and earlier this year, we agreed upon a term sheet. The term sheet isn't really a binding agreement, it was just a mechanism to, to negotiate to a conclusion that does all the things you're talking about, to separate. But what is left in place is what is called for in the state statute for airport authorities, which means city still appoints members, as Commissioner Garrick is alluding to. The city would, if there's any debt incurred by the airport, bonds are issued. The current law changed it a little while ago, but, you know, eight, 10 years ago maybe, but the current law is the city commission would approve those bonds, and that's why, as Sean said, when, once they've approved that, then when it comes to a mill levy that supports those bonds, you're required to, to levy the mills. This is not one of those situations, they don't have bonds. But the third thing is, when, that won't change, is that, and, you know, to the extent that the airport seeks a mill levy request, up to four mills, then they would, then the city may approve it, may not, but may approve it. And so the term sheet talks about ultimately having an amendment to the memorandum of understanding that was approved after that mediation you were talking about a year and a half ago. We'll be amending that, and in the term sheet talks about the fact that there will be a request made in a timely manner by the Airport Authority. We had some language in there that dealt with the timing of that and so forth, because they will have an audit, and that'll get done, you know, right the time we're getting started. So, starting with 2022, maybe the budget cycle for 2023, that presumably will be in the memorandum of understanding between the airport and the city of Fargo, and there will be, you know, agreed-upon mechanism that'll direct them to make a presentation to the city commission and, and put the question before you at that time. This year, you know, we're in a transition period, and so as I think Mr. Doberstein is saying, he's submitted, submitted his budget information as he always has done. Yeah, and, you know, the requirement for coming to the city commission in June, let's say, isn't, isn't in writing yet. So, if that helps.
Any other discussion? Mayor? Commissioner Strand?
Parliamentary procedurally speaking, you have a motion to deny something, what might be appropriate, and I'm not suggesting the votes will land anywhere or not, if you'd prefer, I could withdraw the motion to deny, and somebody could have a motion to approve, my vote will be where it is. If you'd prefer a positive motion, like, you know what, versus a negative one? Like, somebody would move, I move to approve this two mills, somebody seconds it, then there's a, a motion for a positive action versus a motion to deny something? Does that matter to the chair?
We always like to be positive. So you're going to withdraw your motion?
I, I will withdraw my motion, but you all know where my vote will be.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the two mills?
Mr. Chairman, I think you need to also get the approval second.
Commissioner Pepcorn, you're okay with him denying or withdrawing?
No, I won't, I won't withdraw my second.
Okay, let's go with the vote forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Strand?
This is a motion to deny, correct?
Correct.
I vote yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Preston?
No.
Honi?
No.
Any other business on this? We'll take a five-minute recess, go back to talk about the drought.[1256.75] Recall the meeting back order. I'll wait till Mr. Preston makes it back up here. If it was Pepcorn, he'd be back up here by now, he's got longer legs, but... So the only thing made Bruce happier this rain this weekend is watching Troy Lance play football.
I was happy about the rain, yes. Yes, I was.
Drought and water management update. We went through this a few weeks ago, and some things have changed, and you guys are going to give us the latest, what's going on?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Would you have an updated drought status report for you tonight, which includes information on how we're managing our water system through these drought conditions that we're experiencing? As explained during our last update in front of the commission about a month ago, the water utility continues to monitor and collect data, tracking the changing conditions, and so a month ago at the July 26 commission meeting, we recommended going to a Phase Two drought advisory level. And there was some discussion about that. Maybe that's going too far, maybe it's not going far enough, and so the reason that that was the recommendation a month ago was it was based on the data that we were seeing, primarily river flows and reservoir levels. And so that's in conducting ourselves in conformance with our drought and water service management plan, and so that was our recommendation. This is the most recent monitoring summary based on data being collected as of last Friday, August 20th. And you might recall, the data last month had us at a combined 1.72. Now, on this summary sheet, it's got us at 2.68, and so the needle has moved almost a full point on a four-point scale, and so that's just an indicator that things have been going in a poor direction lately, and it tends to happen rather quickly. As you can see on the bottom of this slide, the most heavily weighted indicators are river flows and water elevations in the reservoirs that feed those rivers. So because we have a surface water treatment plant, we rely on stream flows primarily from the Red and Cheyenne Rivers, obviously, so over the past 30 days, we're not happy about it, very unfortunate, but we've seen a marked change in the stream flow and reservoir level indicators, and get into that in detail in just a moment. But based on the information that we'll be showing tonight, the recommendation will be to move from a Phase Two drought advisory to a Phase Three drought warning level, and we'll explain why that's being recommended and what that means to the public and our water system in just a moment. This is a startling graphic. We'd like to take a look at the two most critical indicators, river flows and reservoir levels, and this slide shows stream flows in the Red River as of August 17th, and you can see, it doesn't need a whole lot of description, there's a dramatic drop in flow down to, as of August 17th, 81 CFS, which is right around the 10th percentile. I haven't seen that in my career with the city of Fargo, and this is important to note because both the city of Fargo and the city of Moorhead take water from the Red River at the same location. Similar slide, but this is a slide of the Cheyenne River at the Kindred Gage as of August 17th. You can see a similar dramatic drop in flow down to about 35 CFS, and so that even went slightly beyond the 10th percentile. This slide shows the reservoir level and outflow at Orwell Dam. Orwell is on the Otter Tail chain of lakes, and that feeds the Red River. And so when we look at these, we consider not just reservoir levels, but we couple that with inflow and outflows from the reservoir. We also consider the Army Corps of Engineers' release plans looking ahead, and so the release plan at Orwell is to maintain 102 CFS for the time being, and that would mean about 80 CFS, is that correct, Troy, at the Midtown Dam in Fargo? This is an interesting graphic that I asked Troy to include because Orwell is on the Otter Tail River and Chain of Lakes, and so this slide shows you the Otter Tail watershed, and you can see, it's relatively sizable. It includes the Detroit Lakes, Purim, Pelican Rapids, Battle Lake, and Fergus Falls areas, and since this is the main watershed that feeds the Red River, we watch conditions within this watershed very carefully. This slide, then, is the reservoir level and outflow at Bald Hill Dam, and this is Lake Ash T'Bula. That feeds the Cheyenne River, and so speaking with the core, the release plan at Bald Hill Dam for the foreseeable future is about 24 CFS. And the Cheyenne River watershed is shown in green on this map, and so you can see that it includes Devil's Lake. So although the Cheyenne is our secondary source, we watch conditions in this watershed very closely as well. This is an interesting graphic. This is what makes up our water demands, and we categorize those as either essential or non-essential, and the bottom line is, non-essential uses is primarily outdoor water use. So it does tend to be seasonal in nature, and we generally see that go away after Labor Day. Our drought and water service management plan focuses on non-essential uses, and if we need to, we would get into the essential uses. Haven't done that in my career, hope I never have to, but we're trying to avoid that here as well. We do think we're being good stewards of our water resources in Fargo, and that's what this slide tries to show, our average daily water use per capita between 1980 and 2020, and you can see that it has followed a somewhat steady decline. Back in 1980s, from about 150 gallons per person per day to about just over 90 gallons per person per day today, so pretty proud of that. This, again, is just a repeat of the drought summary table that I showed you earlier, and if you just focus on the reservoir levels and stream flow exceedances, you can see that over a relatively short period of time, the needle has moved a lot, and so that's what has us in front of you tonight. So this is what the public and businesses need to be aware of with the adoption of a Phase Three designation. Again, the biggest impact is outdoor lawn watering. It does have the biggest effect on our daily water demands. So in conformance with our drought and water service management plan, we're proposing that lawn watering under Phase Three be reduced to one day per week, following the residential garbage collection schedule. It is the thing most largely impacted. This is what that residential garbage collection map looks like. This will be the one-day-per-week allowable watering schedule, starting north to south, Monday in orange, Tuesday in yellow, Wednesday in green, Thursday in blue, and Friday in purple. We do have a contingency plan. As you've heard before, we have three surface water permits, one on the Red River, one on the Cheyenne River, and one for water in Lake Ash T'Bula. We have a permitted allocation for 35,880 acre-feet of water that right now is sitting in Lake Ash T'Bula. And this slide shows all of the permitted allocations in Lake Ash T'Bula for not just Fargo, but others as well, and these permit allocations are for water supply purposes. As I just mentioned, Fargo's permit, 35,880 acre-feet, but West Fargo also has a permit, 954 acre-feet. And so you combine those two, that's what's available to our regional water system. Our drought and water service management plan includes a strategy to call on this water if the need arises, and since West Fargo and Grand Forks also have permitted allocations in Lake Ash T'Bula, we've been having discussions with them. If the need arises to call on water in Lake Ash T'Bula, we're planning a joint request, all three entities, Fargo, West Fargo, and Grand Forks, at the same time. It's important to note that the construction of Bald Hill Dam, the reason that it exists today is for two reasons. One is water supply, and the other is flood control. Of course, we're talking about the water supply component tonight. And so with that, on the screen is the suggested motion tonight. We are recommending that the city of Fargo change its drought status from a Phase Two designation to Phase Three. We have been in contact with West Fargo and the Caspero Water Users District that will be doing the same thing. So Troy is here. Thank you, Troy. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to steal all the thunder, but I wanted to get through the presentation, and you can help me with questions. How does that sound? Thank you.
Well, you let Troy off the hook on this one. I knew we had some there. Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I support, obviously, I think, the world of our staff and that, but when I look at what's happening, this is all looking backwards, and now we're at the end of August, and now for the next five days, four of them have rain in them, and the temperatures now are in the 70s for the next two weeks, and so I agree to be, it's good to be cautious, but I think we're looking backwards instead of forwards. We had a good rain, that was obviously great this weekend, and so that's my question, Bruce, can you explain that?
No, I appreciate that, and nothing would make the two of us happier than in 30 days to be standing up here saying it all went away, but what we saw with the rainfall this past weekend, and I was truly excited about that, I think there was about two inches of rain, not in every location, but that fell over that Otter Tail watershed. The problem is, the water had gotten so depleted, in such a deficit position, that Ben Dowell told me today, our average annual precipitation right now would be about eight inches, and we're only at about two. So we got some ground to make up before we'll see some of the stream flows come back, tributaries, but you got to start with last weekend, and so we're really hopeful that this is a short-term deal, but going into winter, we think that it's a good position to put ourselves in right now.
Troy, what did the river go up with the rain we got last weekend?
Yeah, it went from about 80 cubic feet per second. It jumped up probably over 300, but now it's like, it's like right back down to where it was, and that's what we see right now, is we see, if we get a rain, we see the river jump up, drops right back down. And then also, to Bruce's point, in that Otter Tail watershed where he showed that we're at such a deficit that the lakes and ground, all the lakes are down, the groundwater that's connected is down, so really what the rain goes to, it fell in the right spot, but it's really going to replace that deficit versus turning into stream flows significance that we're going to see long-term.
Commissioner Garrick?
What's the penalty if they catch you watering your lawn on a Tuesday and you're supposed to be on Monday?
The means of enforcement is notification. It's kind of like the parking area downtown. We give you some sort of chance to comply. That's always going to be our effort, and then we would fall back to ordinances similar to the sump pump hose violation that's been around forever. I don't recall, Eric, specifically, what that is, but there is a nominal fee out there somewhere if we need to use that.
The city has the authority to shut off water, and then also it's an infraction to violate one of these orders. An infraction that carries a maximum penalty of $1,000 fine, as determined by the court.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question is, did we see reduction in Phase Two of usage? We went to Phase Two, and we said, "Don't water every day." Did we see people comply with that?
We saw, in our daily use, we saw about a 3%. We didn't quite hit the 5% to 10% mark that's identified, but we did see about a 3%, and we've been doing some monitoring of addresses and drive-arounds and so forth, but we did see a reduction.
Okay. Any other question? Commissioner Preston?
How does this get communicated out to the public?
Thank you, Commissioner. The other thing that comes with this third phase is weekly news releases. We'll start by putting our first news release out tonight and listing what residents, businesses need to know about watering restrictions, and then have a contact phone number, website. That'll start tonight.
I'm assuming, I'm sorry, can I, I'm assuming putting it out on social media would also be part of it?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move.
Mr. Preston, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Strand, second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good, let's see what happens in the next two weeks. Status report from City Attorney on implementation of a ward system in governance. Eric Johnson to explain.
You have my letter in the agenda at your July 12 meeting. Motion was approved, directing me to prepare the resolution or sort of whatever document is necessary in order to place an issue before the voters, the city electorate, at a citywide election as to whether or not the city should move from a commission form of government, meaning a form of government where all five commissioners, including the mayor, voted at large and serve at large, to a ward system where the mayor is voted at large by the electorate, but the, each commissioner or becomes a council member, and they're elected by their ward. So undertook considerable investigation into how one was about doing that. There is a statutory process, I might add, but that calls for a special election with this, that question before it. However, the problem with that is when you're a home-rule city like ours, where we have a home-rule charter with considerable language in there about commission form of government, you'd need to amend both, and so that becomes quite complicated, and the happy news is that because we are a home-rule charter, because our charter authorizes us to change the form of government, again, by citywide vote. Home-rule charters are amended always by a citywide vote. We can use that process to undertake this step of putting it before the voters. Home-rule charters generally have to be implemented by ordinance. We don't have an ordinance that sort of lays out the structure, and so the first step here will be for me to draft an ordinance. I think it'll largely parrot what the state statute process is, but nevertheless, we'll have to approve the ordinance, and then once we have the ordinance in place, that'll provide the mechanism for then placing this in front of a citywide vote. So I just thought a status report was in order. I'd completed my research, and wanted to let you know that that's what would be coming. If you have any other instructions or clarification, happy to hear. Your motion, I think, gave me the direction I need, but if you have anything else you wanted to let me know, I'm happy, I'm all ears.
Commissioner Garrick, I think you're the one to just push. I think the original motion was by yourself, eh?
Yep, so no motion is required. He's going to draft it, and we'll take a look at it and see what we think when it's drafted.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the impression we were going to have a community task force that would vet this, so where's that at?
Bruce, Mike, and myself are working on members of the list and how we would do that, John. We've been focused on the budget, but we will, bringing that out this fall, that will take several months to go through, just as the last election committee did, so I'd anticipate we'd ask different members to be part of it. We'd mix public with different people that are experts and try to come back. Eric Johnson talked about, this is more than just changing the ward system. This is changing our home-rule charter in a great difference, and changing from commissioners to the ward system, and I'm not sure everybody's in agreement on that. I mean, you don't know what it finally is going to look like. You've had some ideas, there might be three wards, four wards, might be some other elements that were in the previous election committee that were discussed, and I'm not sure the whole commission is united on this discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Preston?
So Eric, can you give us just a little more detail about what this ordinance would contain? Are we talking process questions inside that, or what would it be?
Yeah, correct. Again, I think it would largely parrot the state statute that already exists, where it just, it'll basically say, what the statute currently says is, one question goes in front of the voters, do you want a city council form of government or not, and that's on a special, at a special city commission or a special citywide vote, excuse me. I think the ordinance will place before the, because we have a home-rule charter that needs a number of amendments, there'd be a resolution that would, if approved, adjust the home-rule charter to convert it to a council form of government with wards. That amendment would be what is placed in front of the city voters for a decision. I would propose that it be placed on the June city election. You can certainly have it at a special election if you so choose, but could go in front of the voters at the same time as the other matters in front of the city in June.
So if I could ask a follow-up again. So if we, and obviously, we're moving forward with a charter commission of sorts, I'm not certain how the ordinance and that come together.
Yeah, I mean, if you want those, if you want to slow down one process, presumably it'd be the process I'm going through, slow down and wait for the charter commission to give the direction.
Okay.
Certainly can do that, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. The two questions we were looking at being vetted by community people were term limits and wards. Are we on the same page there?
Three items, five versus seven.
No, we voted that down.
Okay.
As far as our vote, we didn't advance that to the commission, to a task force, but we did these other two. So what timeline will that task force have? Because that's what I'm wondering. I see that's where this is, the rubber's going to hit the road, is when they start convening?
I would think it would take several months. We'd have to form it over September and start, but the last election committee, I think, took, Arlette, you were on it, what, four, six months, a year?
It was six months, and let me caution everybody, it went way too fast. And granted, there were a lot more questions, I think, that that task force was dealing with, but there needs to be a foundation of understanding of all of the members before, you know, before the whole discussion happens, and that was skipped last time.
Commissioner Garrick?
And that's why having a draft of something is so important, to have something on the table, say, this is what it would look like, what would you keep or what would you change about this thing that we would vote on. So that's why I want, that's why we've directed Eric to draft this, and it doesn't have to wait for him to draft it, we can do it at the same time, on different lines. But once he has it drafted, it needs to go in front of that committee then, or whatever task force, if you want to call it that, and then they look at that thing, and that's what they debate. If you do just a nebulous debate about ideas, then it's going to happen like it happened last time, and nothing's going to get done. But if you have something concrete to look at and say, "Well, that's good, that's good, and that's bad, let's do those things," then it'll move along in an orderly fashion, and that's, I think, what Arlette was saying, and I was there too, and that's what happened. So we need to have something on the table to debate.
So Eric, as far as you're concerned, our business is done? You don't need a motion?
I don't need a motion, no. I'll just move forward.
If we didn't want to pursue a ward system, what would that motion be?
I mean, it's, you'd be, now you're reconsidering, I mean, are you...
You think we're fine as is. What if the majority of the commission really didn't want to pursue this? What would that motion be?
Well, you're moving to reconsider the vote. Well, you're moving to reconsider the vote from July 12th and testing my knowledge of motions to reconsider in the, under the revised rules, but that, that would be what was required. I might add, you know, the, the next step I'm undertaking doesn't decide anything other than a procedural ordinance to change the form of government if you want to. And so that would be the next step. Only after that would we move forward with a resolution that actually proposes home rule charter amendment that would be placed.
Commissioner Garrick, just to be clear, we would have to vote again to put it on the ballot. So whatever he's drafting is not going on any ballot. It's just coming to us to then debate and do what we, what we will with it. If it's a task force, fine. If that's just us debating it, fine. But we did not vote to put this on the ballot. So I think what we're doing is just fine. If people later don't like it and they don't want to proceed, we can vote as commission to do that. But I see nothing wrong with him drafting something for us.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
I could say something here too. I have heard from at least three different groups that are interested in this topic and are ready actually to put it on a petition. And I would say we would be much wiser to have a commission, a charter commission, actually think through everything so that it's very clear and well thought through. I believe Minot had a problem where it came to the city election to be voted on by a petition from the general public and it created a bit of a mess. They got it all cleaned up eventually, but it took a number of years to clean it up. So I would say we'd be wise to, to stay on this track and, and move forward with it.
That'd be nice to know the group's names, Arlette, so we can include them in part of the discussion with whatever board we set up. So it'd be nice to have what people think is wrong with the present system, what they chose to improve.
Any other discussion? There's no action item on this then? Eric?
Correct.
Okay. Recommendations from Red River Regional Dispatch Center. Steve Dirksen to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a project that's been about three years in the, in the making. We've, through the Red River Regional Dispatch Board, we put a ad hoc facilities committee together to look at the facility, look at our calls for service and things like that. If you remember back in the early 2000s, we, we undertook a, a process in Cass and Clay Counties that has never been undertaken, to my knowledge, anywhere else in the country, where we share a dispatch center across two different states. We're the first in the country to do that. We've been working it successfully. It was a great partnership in the beginning. We both had needs in each of our counties and we found a, a center to go to and it served us well for the last 17 years. But with the growth in our, in our two counties over the last 20 years, we would go from about 180,000 people, 175,000 people in 2000 to the current population of just under a quarter million people, you can realize that the facility calls for service continue to rise. We're as full as we can be with the number of dispatch councils that we have. We have eight councils within the dispatch center. We've had a consultant study that came in and indicated that we need to be at 10 at this point. And within the next 10 to 15 years, we need to be at 14 with the corresponding increase in staff. We'd love to increase the number of staff that we have to answer the calls, the 911 calls, the administrative calls, the radio calls from the, the public safety folks, but we don't have anywhere to put them. So we undertook a, a process to identify places that we could build a new center with our unique relationship. It creates some unique funding app, ways that we can fund, where we can spend money, how Minnesota can spend money in North Dakota, how North Dakota can spend money in Minnesota, things like that. But what we've done is we've worked through a, a process and determined what we, what we kind of need for a basis. We're working through hopefully a, a private, a public-private partnership as well in this. Some meetings were held last week and some interviews on, on an architect. And so what we have before you today, I've been working with the mayor on this as well for about the last 18 months to try to bring this forward, is we have a motion before you to accept the, the offer by Cass County to be the fiscal agent for building a new dispatch center and then to go ahead with the, the committee's recommendation on selecting SCH as the architectural firm that we would work, work for. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions to the chief? This process is moving along nicely and it should be, and we would like to get this built within a year.
We're hoping that we can turn dirt next spring and hopefully in mid 2023 have the, have the building operational.
So do I have a motion, please?
I support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
COVID-19 update, I think Desi Fleming's online?
Yes, I certainly am. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Cass County currently has 347 active COVID cases with 1,508 active cases in North Dakota. Our county numbers are getting close to the peaks of our first and third surges, which were 558 cases in May of 2020 and 609 cases in April of 2021. The 14-day rolling average positivity rate continues to increase and is currently 5.4% in Cass County. Hospitalizations are also increasing statewide. Currently, there are over 20 individuals in the COVID units in our local health systems and there have been four new deaths in Cass County over the past few weeks. The age category with the most active cases in Cass is the 30 to 39-year-old demographic with the 20 to 29-year-olds at a very close second. Also note that cases in kids continue to increase. Roughly 20 to 25% of active cases are under the age of 18. The majority of counties in North Dakota, all but 18, are now designated as high transmission by the Centers for Disease Control, with nine of those counties having substantial transmission. Testing numbers are up approximately 9% across the state, but still much lower than the peak testing in November of last year. The Delta variant remains the only strain with increasing numbers in North Dakota. As a reminder, the PCR test used to diagnose COVID will determine if a test is positive or negative. The next step at the state lab or CDC is to do gene sequencing on a percentage of the PCR test to determine the strain of COVID. This helps to identify what is circulating in the state. The predominant strain at this time is the Delta variant. North Dakota vaccination rates are below the national average in every eligible age category and does vary widely by county. Our lowest fully vaccinated rate in Cass continues to be the 12 to 18-year-olds at 41.7%, with the 19 to 29-year-olds not significantly higher. This is concerning going into a school year with the younger kids that are not yet eligible for vaccination and weather changes that will soon have us indoors more. Also, the state and nation are seeing more case numbers, hospitalizations and deaths in a higher proportion of unvaccinated individuals. The North Dakota Department of Health will begin to post on their dashboard breakthrough data within the week so people are better able to track how the state is doing. Currently, less than 1% of fully vaccinated individuals have become infected with COVID in North Dakota. The ACIP has now authorized an additional dose of COVID vaccine under emergency use authorization for moderately to severely immunocompromised individuals such as organ transplant patients. Please note that when we talk an additional dose, it is referring to someone who likely didn't have the full immune response from the initial vaccine. This is different from a booster dose. A booster dose is for individuals who had a full response from their initial series, but their immunity is waning over time. The North Dakota Department of Health will let providers know when boosters will be available and what parameters will be in place for who is eligible. They tentatively have mentioned healthcare workers, long-term care and people 50 and over as a plan. In the new city, it was announced that Pfizer vaccine was granted full FDA approval for those 16 years and older for the prevention of COVID. Pfizer continues to have emergency use authorization for those 12 to 15 years of age. Although we're beginning to hear about additional doses and booster doses, there is still a large part of our community that remains unvaccinated. Our priority at public health is to encourage those eligible unvaccinated individuals to please consider vaccination to protect yourself and those around you. Vaccines are readily available throughout our community. You can also visit vaccinefinder.org to find a location convenient for you. To be effective, we continue to need a layered approach to prevention. So along with vaccination, CDC, the North Dakota Department of Health and local public health recommend masking in indoor public spaces, adequate ventilation, social distancing, hand washing and staying home when you are sick. These measures work together to help control the spread of COVID in counties with substantial or high transmission rates. I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have Dr. Newman and Chelsea Matter, the Chair of the Board of Health, on virtually four questions as well.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Desi, maybe just for the sake of the bigger picture, the legislature, if I recall, initiated limitations on the governor's office and on the Department of Public, on public health? Is that correct on mask recommendations or mandates?
Yeah, so the state health officer and the governor.
So clarifying that, they don't have the authority, but if there is any authority, it lies at the local jurisdictions level?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Preston.
Chelsea Matter, who is the Chair of the Board of Health, if she wants to address the commission and the public in regards to the discussion around the letter that was sent to us, that may be helpful.
I sure can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Preston, for, for giving me the opportunity. I think, you know, as I stated in the letter, the vaccines have played a really critical role in preventing countless diseases over the years. And we have several vaccines, but as Desi shared, I think these vaccination levels are, are not where we would like them to be. And certainly I'm hopeful that FDA approval will push more people to become vaccinated, but I don't know that we have time to wait and see what, what that does to people's attitudes towards the vaccination. So I do think that, you know, we're watching and seeing what's happening in some of the states where the vaccination rates are low and hospitals are feeling that they're getting overwhelmed. We're starting to see what we saw back in November in those other states and a, you know, it could be certainly heading for us. So I do echo Desi's recommendations and, you know, what the CDC has put forward and encourage you to consider following those CDC recommendations in the public setting, you know, including masking and all the other effective measures that we have in place, hand washing, social distancing. And certainly commend Fargo Public Schools for doing their part and making sure that those kids stay safe. We know, as Desi pointed out, the vaccination rates are pretty low in some of those younger age groups, but we still don't have great vaccination rate even amongst the, the 30 to 39-year-olds and even the 20 to 29-year-olds, which Desi had pointed out, we're starting to see the, the highest rate of hospital admissions. So I think it's really important to have a discussion on what the city's role is when it comes to keeping the residents of Fargo safe. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Dr. Newman, the thing I heard that was disturbing to me in talking to Sanford and Essentia is the dynamics have changed over the last year. So the dynamics before, we had more than enough capacity to go up to 200 hospitalizations. Everybody's fine, everybody's happy. In discussion, the Sanford system, they are on a work shortage, workplace area where they do not have the numbers of workers they need to staff up as much as they wanted to in the past. So isn't there an element now that's a little bit more at risk in the pediatric age group that we'll need beds? And then also that we may not have enough beds as Fargo is a center for the state oftentimes? I heard some concerns by our healthcare teams that they may not have enough space. Can you talk to that, please?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
I, I don't have exact data. I think what you said is accurate. I think that it, it is a different thing, it is a different wave that we're anticipating than last time. And I think one of the points you made is very important that, you know, it's, we, it's not only looking at our Cass County numbers, even for pediatrics, but for all ages, it's looking at, you know, Sanford and, and the like as a, a referral center for all over the state. So we need to be monitoring state levels as well.
Any other questions of the commissioners? Mr. Preston, you want to bring forth the recommended temporary employment policy to the group?
Sure. So a smaller.
Mr. Strand around that, so.
Excuse me. So a smaller group, which included HR and Michael Redlinger was there, as well as Board of Health Chair Chelsea and Desi, a couple of commissioners were in then that conversation and are bringing temporary employment policy, which is included in your packet, that would include, you know, really encouraging employees to get vaccinated, first of all, but also then requiring masks of employees and people entering the building. So if this would get approved, we would go again to the practice of having masks and everything available at the door for visitors. And obviously, if, if the public did not comply, then the, the staff person would just involve their supervisor at that point. So, yeah, so this is being brought for consideration and you can see the three motions and maybe they could all be done in one, basically to receive and file the letter from the Board of Health and adopt the temporary employment policy for preventing the spread of the virus amongst employees and visitors to our buildings. And then secondly, to communicate, continue to communicate to employees that vaccination is the most important action they can take. And then finally, to issue a public statement encouraging other businesses and employers to consider the similar actions. And I would move that, those three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, I do note on this that it says it requires that if we are substantial or high by the recommendation of CDC. So if we had dropped to lower levels than this, the policy would drop down to no masks. So basically only as they're substantial and high. And in talking to Dr. Newman, I'm under the impression the Delta replication time or duplication as quickly as it goes, you're expected to have a, should continue to rise over the next four to six weeks. And that's a people's concern is that we may spike like we did last spring and last fall as well. So the impact hopefully would be felt by doing this at this point rather than waiting until later. Is that the intent of the?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Strand? No, I did, I don't get some. Any other comments, discussion?
This is Desi. Could I just add a clarification on the, on the policy? It was required for, it would be required for city employees and it would be strongly recommended for visitors coming into the public buildings, our public buildings.
Sure.
So visitors could choose not to wear a mask? Is that right, Desi?
Yes, we would have masks available at entrances. We would strongly recommend, we would have signage for it, but they would not be required, but staff, city staff would be required.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Garrick.
So when, when does it end? When the CDC says we're at a lower level? I'd, I'd like to see us address it on a regular basis, whether that's every two weeks or every month. I'd like us just to bring up the issue and, and if not have a revote, at least talk about the mandate in place. I think one mistake we made last year was we had it in place for so long that when it was brought up again, it was highly politicized, not just, you know, I don't think it's on purpose, but the media is like, well, someone wants to get rid of the mandate, that must be a big issue. You know what I mean? If we have it on a regular basis, once, I'll, I'll just say once a month, fine, then we, on, on regular order, we could put it on the agenda to say, let's up or down this again so that we can, we can talk about it and, and make our case again, so the public knows where we're at.
And, and this is flexible enough. If it goes down for two days, it'd come off. If it goes back up, it'd go up, but we should review it every month. That's fine. I don't see any issue with that.
Mr. Pepcorn.
So Mr. Trev, a question, so the people that are vaccinated are going to be required to wear a mask? What, what's the science behind that?
Mr. Chairman, Desi or Dr. Newman, do you want to address that?
I think that'd be good to have somebody that actually has science. Thank you.
Which one do you want to take, Desi? Do you want Dr. Newman?
Sure, Dr. Newman, go ahead.
Either, either one of you can.
That's okay. I'm, I can try. Yeah, unfortunately, but we have seen nationwide something called breakthrough cases where even though, so vaccines are working, people that are vaccinated are much less likely to have severe illness, to experience hospitalization or death. But because of this new Delta variant and its high transmissibility and infectious rates or attack rates, we are seeing that even vaccinated individuals that may not have symptoms are able to carry higher loads in their nose and transfer it. are able to carry higher loads in their nose and transfer it to other people. So because of that recommendation, as we get through this surge, we're asking those individuals to mask for the protection of others.
So, Mr. Chair, just a quick question. You're not asking, you're mandating, right? This isn't asking, this is a mandate. You're, you're making us all wear masks, if I'm, if I'm correct.
We're asking our employees, yes.
No, you're not asking them, you're telling them, correct?
Requiring all employees to wear masks, yes. Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, after what we've all been through this last year, I would think that it would behoove us to err on the side of caution and to do what we can to protect the people, given the, the knowledge we have and that we don't have. I just can't imagine that we would not act with the science guiding us. And we don't have at this point a discussion about going to the whole community and telling everybody what to do. But we should be doing it with our own workforce. We should be doing it with our own buildings. We should be doing it with our own people. And if we, and that should be the standard we uphold for their and our and everybody's best safety. So I'm, I'm all for, I didn't want to wear a mask tonight, nobody does. This isn't about that. It's about lives and people who are at risk. And how can we minimize the risk they may be at? I'm guessing we all have family members that if this got to them, it could kill them. So let's keep it from getting to them the best we can. So I'm, if, if it starts with us in the city, fine, let's do it with our own people and let's show the, the public. And I, I want to commend the school district for courage and backbone and for making the right decision for the, for the sake of the kids and the public. And I, and I want to join with the school district, I hope we do, with that messaging that we, we can put out for a better community.
Mr. Garrick.
Speaking of the school, I, I spoke to almost all of the school board members, and Tracy was one of them. And I asked a simple question to those members. If we don't have a mask mandate in schools, how many kids will get sick? How many kids will be hospitalized? And how many will die? We don't know. Okay. Now we have a mask mandate in schools. How many will get sick? How many will get hospitalized? And how many will die? We, we don't know. So to just say that we're doing something, if you can't quantify it, you can't have it, right? So we're saying that we're saving lives and we're saying we're doing these grand things by having our employees wear masks. That's not going to do anything for transmission, transmissibility in our community. It's really, it's nothing more than a show. It really is. We're not even mandating people do it in, when they come in the building. So when they masked my child and they didn't ask me about it, it's not harmless to do that. There are other aspects to a child than just what they breathe. It's when they take their mask off and they put it on the floor, and then they throw it at their friend, and then they touch each other, and then they touch their face constantly, and then they, they can't see people's faces, they can't see your emotion. All they can see is your eyeballs. That affects their, their development, all that does. So you're not saving anybody's life, in my opinion. You're not, you're hurting them socially, you're hurting them mentally, you're hurting them developmentally. So there's other aspects to this. So I'm not going to join with the school board and, and pat myself on the back for this. We're not doing anything. And I, and I think the school board needs to reconsider. And I've asked each of them to revisit this plan once, at least once a month, and almost all of them said, that's a good idea to do. And I hope they follow through with that.
Mr. Strand.
Let the science speak for itself. We have experts in public health. Why do we have them if we're not going to listen to them?
Mr. Garrick.
More kids died of the flu last year than of COVID. Do we have, do we have a, a mask mandate for the flu? Did we last year, the year before that, the year before that? The flu is, is more deadly to the, to the children than this. So I'm not seeing the science on that. So follow the science seems to change really rapidly to what, to what it want you to mean. And right now, it says it wants you to mean that we have to mask our employees. It's not going to do anything.
So we follow the science, the three elements that we decided on in the, the public health is if our frequency or numbers went up, which they have, they were like 1% or 2%, now we're up to 5.4, headed an upward trajectory. You say we haven't had any deaths, we just had four deaths reported tonight, and it's a younger age group, and we're losing younger people right now. Dr. Newman will tell you, children between 6 and 12 can't be vaccinated because they're not, we don't have a vaccine for them. So we're very concerned about the children. Capacity was the other issue. We used to have 200 beds in the state we could use, and now we're here and we don't. So if we follow the numbers that we followed before, we have some issues right now. And this is being proactive, so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thirty-five, no claps, please. Thirty-five applications for public tax exemptions for improvements made to buildings to add the motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. The people online can go off now. We're, we're done with our discussion on the mask issue. Thank you very much. Number two, receive and file ordinance relating classification of ordinance violations yielding and stopping while operating a bicycle. I think Commissioner Pepcorn brought this up.
Yes, I did, Mr. Chair. And the main thing that concerns me is now we have a special group of people that don't have to follow the traffic laws. Everyone else does, but people on bikes don't have to stop at stop signs. And to me, that's, uh, I, I don't think that's a good thing. So it's, I know the legislature's the ones that passed it and we're just following them, but, but to me, it's, it's, there's certain people that are more better. So then they can go through and they, so it's like motorcycles. That'd be nice to not have to stop at stop signs. Or city commissioners, or tall city commissioners, they don't have to stop at stop signs. How about that? That, that'd be swell. Let's start making special exceptions if you're a nice person. So that's, that's what it is, and to me, it's ridiculous that legislature should be ashamed. That's the end of my comments. And I just had it out of the consent agenda just so I could vote on it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Mr. Garrick.
Just, just for clarity, Eric, we're just, we're just coming in line with the state. That's all we're doing.
Correct.
Yeah. Thanks. For the record, they should stop at stop signs. I agree with you.
Do we have a motion?